And open the meeting, the May 21st meeting of the Eastlawn Meadow Planning Board.
Long ago, so it's not like we're...
First, I went to Mass General Law. We are recording this meeting for the minutes, and Elcat is taping the meeting. Anyone else is recording the meeting, please identify yourself and your organization. During none, we'll go right ahead. We have John Torscha, Lou Moravito, Russ Denver, and George Kingston. I believe that Ty Richards will be attending, arriving somewhat later. But we do have a quorum, so we can proceed. I'd like a motion to take item number four out of order. So moved. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, on item number four, a proposed commercial development for 224 Shaker Road. Anyway, this is the commercial development for Shaker Road. We have a request from the applicant to continue that, as they are still working on engineering based on comments from DPW. So, do I have a motion to continue that? What is the due meeting? It's the... A motion to continue that hearing to June 18th.
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so, 224 Shaker will not be dealt with tonight, if anyone is here for that.
Yes.
That's done with. Okay, can you read the...
Here's our clerk.
Oh, there's our clerk. Hey, they let you go.
They got there early, so they let me in early. Good, and they took me early.
Then you only had to walk in some...
It worked out perfect.
Good.
Great to be here.
Okay, so, we have Ty Richards here now.
We're just starting on item number one.
Sounds good. Do we have any justice?
This is Charlie.
Read right here, okay.
SPRW 2019-14 Burke Restoration for Stanford Streets, Requested By Applicant For Site Plan Waiver For Home Business Offering Small Home Improvement Services at 23 Sanford Street, Assessors Parcel ID 76-40-8, Located in Residential Aid Zoning District. Applicant is John Burke of 23 Sanford Street, Eastlawn Meadow, Mass.
Is anyone here for that? Okay, so this is a home office, basically?
Mm-hmm.
Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Okay, next one.
SPRW 2019-15 Positive Vibes For Gerard Ave, Requested By Applicant For Site Plan Waiver For A Home Office-Based Business Offering Mobile Grooming For Dogs At 49 Gerard Avenue, Assessors Parcel ID 2A-59-592, Located In Residential Aid Zoning District. The applicant is Lindsay Abbott... Oh, boy.
Adalmasi.
Thank you very much, appreciate that.
No problem.
49 Gerard Ave, Eastlawn Meadow, Mass.
Could you come forward?
Yes.
Tell us about what you're doing in...
So what I am doing is I am starting a mobile grooming business, which I have my van, which will be parked at W.J. Quinn, because it's commercial. And I will go to residence homes and groom their dog with a luxury of not having to go anywhere else.
Very good. So you understand, obviously, about the commercial vehicle issues?
Yeah.
Good. Any further questions to the board?
I'll just stay.
Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Good to go.
All right, wonderful, thank you so much.
Okay, next one.
This is continuing to public hearings, ready for those, okay. SP 2019-04 Takeout Restaurant For North Main Street, Requested By Applicant For A Special Permit For A Takeout Restaurant At 192 North Main Street, Assessors Parcel ID 25-3-4, Located In 4,832 Plus or Minus Square Feet In The Business Zoning District. The applicant owner is Vicenzo Amor, 20 Rollins Drive, Eastlawn Meadow, Mass. It's continued from April 16, 2019.
Is Mr. Amor here? So...
I wasn't here last minute.
Right.
Feel free to sit, come to church.
You have a revised topic? Your revised plan?
Couple of questions right off the bat. Where are we at dumpster D?
I think we should show them in the back.
I get passed on a front end space.
Yes.
And we spoke with your attorney last time about the need to get an easement with shared driveway. Did he speak to you about that?
He did.
And has anything happened, done that yet?
No. I guess we had to talk to the lady next door.
Yeah.
She said, you know, to...
But...
You had to have a written or what?
Yeah, we need, we need a formal easement, cross-easement between the two owners of the lots. So that, the problem is that you and she can have a handshake that says, "We're going to do this, we can just share the driveway." But five years from now, she sells that lot to somebody else and they decide to put a fence down there, okay? You know, that's, we've run into this issue before.
How would that, how would they be able to use the driveway, because right now, if it lasts already 30 years?
You know, I don't have the, the site plan for, for their building, so I can't really know that. But the point, the point, I see your site plan, but not for, not for their building.
That's the width of the driveway.
Yeah. The, the point is, we really need to have a cross-easement, okay? Because you know, know what's going to happen in the future. Somebody could buy their building, tear it down, and completely reconfigure the site, okay? This happens. And then you're stuck with, you can't get out of the parking lot, okay? Also, obviously, the fire department is very interested in making sure that they can get behind the building if they need to, okay? So, that, that, that's one issue.
I don't think you need a fire truck behind any of this, but it's an existing building, it's been here for 100 years.
I understand that.
Fell, knocked it down, putting a new building up.
Yeah.
Different story.
Yeah. But, you know, these things happen, okay? That's all I'm saying. So, we'll need a, some kind of formal agreement between the two of you. It's called a cross-easement, okay? It's relatively common. The other problem is, you've now only got six parking places. And the parking formula that the building inspector put out said you need seven.
Or of a six per 1,000 square feet, not seven, that's something...
No, it's based on the, the two floors, okay? You've got two floors.
Well, there's nothing, that's...
It's still square footage.
But that's not used, it's not, not what it's used...
Not now, but could be used.
It can't be used for anything.
Why not?
Because it's a, it's a second floor, they have a kitchen on the second floor.
I didn't say, kitchen could be used for office space, could be used for a lot of different...
The word?
Yeah. The parking, the parking formula is established by the building commissioner, okay? Says that this needs seven spaces. The, the other issue I got is that the building itself is not accessible. Handicap. You've got steps, it's the only way in.
How does it mean that there's stories, no steps either?
That's pre-existing, non-conformal, okay? Under, under the state law. I understand that. It's, my understanding is, under the Architectural Access Board's standards, okay? Doing something new like this, it has to be accessible. Now, I can go back and double-check that, but I'd check...
I'll be double-checking that on the Architectural Act.
Okay. So, so have you looked at...
He would have to, he would have to spend over $100,000 on the permanent required improvements for, to him to trigger a new entrance. And even then, if the expense of a handicap entrance, you know, access was in excess of the potential use, they would insist on it.
So you're saying, you'll, you'll, you will not?
I don't think they'll come after this one, because it's...
Yeah.
Because the expense of doing ramps, or whatever you do, is far in excess of the utility to the handicap person. So, it's just one of those little gray areas of the handicap.
I understand it. It's, there's a lot of gray areas with that. Any questions in the board, John?
So how do we proceed with that, then? Do I have to get somebody from the state saying they won't acquire it?
That would be useful.
I've already done what they call an investigation and evaluation of this building. I've submitted to the building department, and it, and it shows all of those requirements. So, if the building inspector has a problem with my investigation, then we can go to the next step, which would be, if we have to get a variance. But it's unlikely that we're going to have to go there, not on this, this kind of a town.
I, I think you're going to have to check back this building inspector on the number of spaces that are needed for getting...
That's true. I mean, if it, if it was, if the parking here was such that you had to accommodate seven people over 10 minutes timeframe each time for this use, then you'd have an issue. But this is a, it was a takeout.
You also have employees in there, okay?
There's only two employees.
Okay, so that leaves you with four spaces, five spaces for your...
I have three spaces.
Again, I'm not going to argue with you about how many you actually need. The, the building inspector has determined that the parking formula...
Has he done that formally, or...
I know Kevin very well, and he's never mentioned it to me. Not to dig at his zoning determination, because that was what we talked, discussed last time with the lawyer.
He don't leave the zoning determination.
Dig at his comments. I knew we discussed that at the last meeting.
I think it was Condon sent an email to us.
We, we should have a zoning determination for this, this case, and find out where it is. Okay, zoning determination. Parking loading space is seven.
No, actually, I think this was me, because that's how many spaces that were there originally, because in the front, there were two. And in order to meet the handicap requirement for a handicap space, without using the public sidewalk as part of it...
Right.
We had to reduce it to one.
Yeah.
However, there is room for two, even from the back. So...
I need that.
Oh, sorry.
But you should have gotten a copy of it.
So that wasn't Kevin, that was me that entered it, because that was sort of there originally.
Okay. Well, I think we need to check with, with the building department, because my understanding when we talked with the lawyer was that he said the determination is seven. So, based on square footage. So, in any case, you're going to need to get the cross-easement replaced, okay? I mean, it, it sounds ridiculous, but in fact, we've run into this on at least one other property in town, where they've used it forever. We told them they couldn't do it, and the guy next door put a fence eventually. And you never know when somebody's going to buy the property next door, tear it down, and put everything off. So you really need to have something there that makes sure that you can actually use it. It should be a very simple instrument, okay? And if you're both in agreement, you're not paying each other anything, okay?
Well, the neighbor needs it as well, so it shouldn't be a lot of trouble.
Yeah, okay. At this point, I'll take, Liam.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I'm going to be accusing myself of this vote, just because of the relationship with the lawyer.
Lou, do you have any questions at this point?
No, it was the cross-easement that was my question. So, we're making an assumption that as part of the special permit, that we're going to allow parking right in front of it.
Well, there's parking right in front now.
Wow. But don't they need a special, so this is a special permit, and not a special permit on that property now?
No, there's no.
So you can place conditions on a special permit?
Yeah.
So you can eliminate parking in front as a condition?
Yeah, because...
Because of safety issues?
You could.
Yeah. So, I would make the assumption that that's going to be there. We heard from the residents at the last meeting, that the parking along that stretch is very difficult, specifically on Dewey Street, as you look out, you look down toward Westwood, past the gas station. So unfortunately, you have that little strip there, and they park directly in front of there. They park sometimes on the sidewalk, in front of Coughlin's. The barber shop allows people park right there. And then you have this parking, makes a traffic nightmare, because you can't see the traffic coming down from CVS through the lights. So this would be at least one small step in trying to create better safety in that area.
Which would automatically make the entire function of this project non-conformal.
It's a safety issue. I drive that probably...
As a consequence of making it a presently viable business property, non-conformal.
Well, for the, for the use that's being proposed. Okay, appreciate your comments, Russ.
It's a safety issue.
Yeah, Ty?
No, I mean, the cross-easement, it's got to be taken care of, we'll see what happens with the handicap ramps.
Yeah. Now, I think, at this point, we'll open up to the public. Ma'am, you had comments?
I was just, at the last minute, you had mentioned, I'm getting a traffic assessment.
Can you give your name and address?
Oh, lady, I meant 14 Dewey Avenue. So, I, we were discussing getting a traffic assessment the last time, because of the corner, I didn't know if that was touched on. I can't remember what's...
That's good. Anyone else wish to comment on this? Hearing none, take it back to the board. I don't think we're going to be able to resolve this tonight. Do you have a motion to continue this?
So, what were the comments received from the police department on this comment? And did we specifically ask about sightlines from Dewey Avenue down to, you know, Westwood and North Main?
There were no comments from the police department, as I see, but I do want you to just circle back to the type of use. I believe the mail that I sent you informed you that it was a retail use.
Right.
So the parking lot would be based on the retail use, not considering the rest.
And you, as I recall, use the total square footage of the building, is that correct?
Do you have your square footage?
I was just looking to see if it's on the zoning... It's on the zoning.
So that should be on your plans, as well as your parking, as well as your matrix, your zoning matrix, that includes the number of parking spaces required for that particular use, so that we're not wiping through documents at some future juncture, looking for this information, okay? All right, thank you. So looking back at the zoning determination, it looks like existing 4,832 square feet, but is that both stories, is that, or just, I mean, 4,800 square feet sounds...
That's the whole.
That's the entire building, so it's about 24, right? Then maybe, maybe the zoning determination form information needs to be reexamined, too. So, if you look on your field card or your sensors card... I see a total square footage of 4,812 square feet. That's, that's based on...
That's land.
No, that's a...
It's the building?
That's the building's square.
Oh, because it says you're in the public site of that size. Just read it, right here. Yeah, I, I got the house at about 1,200 square feet, two levels.
Yes, that's right.
And I got the property at about 4,800 feet.
That's right.
Yeah, that's the site. So we need the square footage of the building.
And you need, you need each floor, not counting the basin?
Yeah. Well, it's 24 by 24.
Plus a little jog up there.
For the porch.
You got a little jog here.
Seven by 12. So seven by 12.
It gets you up to about this, yeah.
So, anything else?
So can you recap the three things that we, we need?
Cross-easement, okay.
Sign between them and the next door neighbor.
Right, okay. We need clarification on whether the building needs to be accessible, okay?
Yep.
And we need to check with the building commissioner for the required parking, okay?
Based upon, it is a retail or is a restaurant?
Well, restaurants are based on seats, and it says no seats.
No seats.
Okay, so, he reverted to the retail, that's my, that's my understanding. Okay. Any comments?
No.
Hearing none, do I have a motion to continue this to the 18th page here? Do I have a motion to continue? Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
All right, site 2019 dash, okay, both takeouts? Wait a minute here.
Both, we continue both.
Okay, good. All right, number five. Site 2009-05 Proposed Commercial Development For Shaker, Shaker Road, Requested By...
We continue that, you already...
Oh. We're just zipping along here.
Yep.
You a public hearing?
Yep, we'll open the public hearing for modification of definitive subdivision plans for Bella Vista Estates Phase Two. Evening. Oh, no, a couple of years ago. Yeah, probably. No, I wasn't in the boardroom. Okay. We, we have a quorum, so, yeah. Mr. John, I have displayed plans.
But don't necessarily...
And make sure both we and the audience can see that.
Sure.
Do you know who's your attorney?
No, no, I don't.
So, do you want to read this?
SD 2019-04 Modification Definitive Subdivision Plan For Bella Vista Estates Phase Two, Requested By Applicant For Modification Of The Subdivision Plan Approved For The Elimination Of Proposed Capri Drive Wetland Crossing, Establishing The Temporary Cul-de-sac Between Capri Drive Cul-de-sac And Bella Vista Drive, Removal Section Of Right-of-Way Between Capri Drive Cul-de-sac And Bella Vista Drive, Revision Of Lots Nine, Ten, Twenty-Five And Twenty-Six To Include The Land Previously Occupied By The Removed Section Of The Right-of-Way And Establish A 30-Foot Wide Utility Easement For Proposed Water And Sanitary Sewer Utilities. The Applicant Bella Vista Holdings Realty Trust, Brian S. Fitzgerald, Trustee, 46 Center Square, Eastlawn Meadow, Mass.
Good evening again, Attorney General. You may want to read this one in the comments from DPW.
Okay, we have comments here from DPW dated May 21st. SD 2019-04 Modification Of Definitive Subdivision Plan Bella Vista Phase Two. While DPW is in support of the modifications to the approved subdivision, we did not receive the revised drawings in time to complete the technical review in advance of the meeting. Number two, Almcrest Country Club, oh, okay, that's, yep. All of these. Okay, the fire department does not have any concerns or any additional requirements.
So, tell us what you're planning on doing.
Well, my name is Brian Fitzgerald. I'm an attorney with the law firm Fitzgerald Attorneys at Law, with offices here in Eastlawn Meadow. I'm also the trustee of Bella Vista Holdings Realty Trust. Here with me this evening is Anthony Carnivalli from AC Home Building, who is the general contractor on the project, as well as Steven D'Ambrogio, who's the project manager, project manager and engineer from GZA. So, I think what we'll do is, there were a couple of, one housekeeping, for lack of a better term, housekeeping item that I would just like to discuss with the board. And then what I'll do is, I'll turn the floor over to Mr. D'Ambrogio to discuss the specifics of the modified plans, okay? The housekeeping item is related to the date for the approval of the subdivision. The current approval expires on June 28th of this year. And we have had a document that has been, gone back and forth between myself, the planning director, and the town council. And at the meeting, when we met with you informally on May 7th, you had asked that I present a formal request. So what we are asking for is a formal request to extend the permit out until April 16th of 2021. And that's the request I submitted a letter today to DPW, as well as the document which deals with what was done with the prior developer for the extension of the subdivision approval. So we have modified that to be particular to Phase Two, as we've called it, which is lots nine through twenty-five.
So we will consider that at the same time that we consider the changes.
Okay.
Well, actually, we can, we can vote on that tonight, because DPW hasn't submitted comments yet. So we can vote on the extension tonight, and then the other one will have to be continued. But tell us what you're planning on doing.
Okay, all right, okay. So we'll have, I'll turn it over to Mr. D'Ambrogio.
Thank you, Attorney Fitzgerald. Again, my name is Steve D'Ambrogio, I work with GZA. As a civil engineer, just to get people familiar where the project is, it's located off of Prospect Street, it's south of the intersection of...
Bottom Road Road.
And Prospect Street.
I might need to turn this slightly.
I think I should, so that the camera can see it, got you. It's right across the street from Raffino Road, and it's just north of the Summers, Connecticut town line. This here is Capri Drive, this is Amalfi Place, and this portion of the project here is Bella Vista Drive. A little bit of history, in July of 2010, the project, the 30-lot subdivision was approved, and that included a connection from Capri Drive to Bella Vista Drive. In June of 2011, the project proponents at the time submitted to the town an application for a temporary cul-de-sac at the end of Capri Drive. That temporary cul-de-sac was granted, and that started Phase One of construction. Phase One included about 11, or 1,200 linear feet of Capri Drive and about 300 feet of Amalfi Place. Fast forward to today, what the applicant is looking to do is to remove the section of road, or Capri Drive, between the temporary cul-de-sac and Bella Vista Drive. The applicant saw an opportunity to reduce construction costs, but also reduce the impact to the wetlands, and eliminate a large three-sided box culvert from the DPW's maintenance requirements. So that section of roadway is located here, and what we're trying to do is eliminate that right of way, turn the Capri Drive temporary cul-de-sac into a permanent cul-de-sac. So the plans that are before you now show revised grading. There's a catch basin that's in the middle of the cul-de-sac currently, which isn't getting any water to it. And with the revisions to the grading, it'll still not get any water to it. So what we're proposing is to raise that structure, put a solid cover on it, install a new catch basin along the edge of the gutter, and then connect it into the existing drain manhole that's there. We're not changing any other aspects... We're not changing any other aspects of the stormwater management system. Pipe sizing is staying the same. With the removal of the impervious, that section of roadway between the end of the temporary cul-de-sac and Bella Vista Drive, I think the system now is actually a little bit overdesigned, but again, not looking to make any changes to it. The lots that we're looking to manipulate, lots twenty-five, or sorry, twenty-five, twenty-six, ten, and nine, we're just changing slightly. They all still meet the zoning requirements, and it's to take up the space that was prior the right-of-way for Capri Drive. Really, that's, the other thing that we have before the planning board are two waiver requests. One is a request to reduce the pavement width from thirty feet to twenty-four. That waiver was requested back in two thousand ten and similarly granted. We're asking for that waiver again, and we're also asking for a waiver for the length of Bella Vista Drive. So, that cul-de-sac is now going to be, instead of connected to Capri Drive, you'll have a cul-de-sac that is just over seventeen hundred linear feet.
We'll run this, take question from the board first? Any questions, issues? Open up to the public if anyone wishes to speak to this issue.
Well, I'm Justin Marfante, and I live on five sixty-nine, so we're right next to where you guys are working. As far as your water issues and stuff like that, for us, the neighbors, we've noticed that they changed just because of all the machinery and everything. There's been a lot of compaction, a lot of water is starting to pitch down towards our house. We have a stream that's kind of slowly formed in our backyard, it's just continuous running water, especially if we get a heavy rain for a day or two. And what it's actually doing is running down the back of our yard into our neighbor's driveway, and then running down his driveway and continuing down the street to a catch basin. So, we've just noticed some potholes and things popping up in their yard, and it's starting to wash out. We have like a little bit of a pitch down into his driveway too, that's starting to wash out because that was like a mulch bed and some dirt and stuff. But the water's running right down the back where your big loom pile is, it's right on the corner of our property, it's coming down into the yard, and we get a lot of heavy rains, so. Other than that, just a lot of water coming towards our house. We've noticed some water issues with our basement this year too, that we haven't had until, you know, all the clearing went on and everything. So, we wanted to see what you guys were doing to address some of that with grading and stuff on the property. Is there any button up next to us?
Thank you. Can I ask the engineer to, is this a construction issue, and if it is?
Yeah, if you look at the, we're the skinny acre that's right next to where you pull into the--
The entrance of Bella Vista.
Yep. I think we bought up to like twenty-five and twenty-six.
Our back end is on twenty-five.
Over here?
Nope, next other side, we're here. There you go, yeah. So, we're down the hole from you guys.
I know that the contractor is currently doing, you know, they're trying to button up the site the end of every day to make sure there isn't any migration of sediment onto the roadway. As far as the drainage--
Yeah.
I don't believe there's anything coming off of the site into Prospect Street.
Exactly, the process will be determined to his backyard, which indicates to me that possibly grading on your site is not yet where it's supposed to be.
Well, I think--
This is not a recent, just to address that, it's not a recent issue either, it's something that's been about a year in the making, so it's not due to heavy rains recently. It occurs during winter, occurs during spring, fall, summer, it's been a--
Once it took a lot of the trees down back there, I thought that's when we started seeing more issues, you know? So, but the original plans we were looking at, we've been there for a couple of years, and it showed a drainage movement flooding right next to our property, so that's--
Well, there's a retention basin that's proposed to go in that area.
Yeah.
And grading is definitely, we had gone under peer review back in two thousand ten, I think that's one of the comments, to make sure that water wasn't shedding off to the property--
Okay.
--or, you know, off the subdivision into the property. I mean, that's definitely that, I'm sure it's something Mr. Carnavali will take a look at--
Yeah, yeah, no problem, yeah.
--to see why water would be running off of the constructed area onto your property. We do have the silt fence--
And if you take a look at this and see something can be done grading-wise or otherwise, do you believe in the problem?
We haven't changed any grading on twenty-five, has it?
I think the comment is that when the trees came out, you ended up with hard pack, okay, from the construction equipment, rather than what was before, basically forest, and that may be accelerating the runoff, is his comment.
Yeah, you got, you got water running down the whole face of that loom pile that's over there, that big loom pile, it's running down the face of that, and it's actually pitching, some of that water's pitching back towards the property that we're on.
It sounds like some of the temporary piles you've got there may be contributing to his issue.
Yep.
Can I ask you to take a look at that and just see if there's some way that you can alleviate that?
Yes.
Via temporary grading, some other way to-- Any other comments from the public on this one?
Dan Potkin and Molly Potkin, fifty-four, Capri Drive. I am one of two of the most direct of others to the petition that's before you this evening, and in principle, we are in favor of the concept of eliminating the roadway and terminating the two cul-de-sacs, as ostensibly as it's shown. My concern is that I want to understand the orders of conditions that the planning board intends to put on this--
Planning board does not do orders of condition, that's conservation.
Okay. Maybe that's my better question.
Yeah.
Who is it that's going to regulate how this thing is finished off, landscaped and dealt with in that manner? Planning board does not, your purview is--
No, we, we, the, we have two different developers now, okay? The one on your section with Capri is, okay, is not Mr. Carnavali, okay? That one has had issue to it, they have submitted plans that have been approved, and those are the plans that will rule in this case. The only difference being that there's going to be a cul-de-sac at the end rather than a through street. And I think in a lot of ways, not having it as a through street is beneficial to both sides of the subdivision, okay? They tend to get a through street.
Well, I understand that. You're preaching to the choir.
Okay.
I stood up here to tell you that I'm in favor of it.
Yeah.
What I'm asking you is, what is it you decide on? Which are, what is your, are you, are you making your decision based on what is, in other words, is Concom really where we want to be to understand the orders of conditions that are going to be placed on this so that we can make sure, for example--
Yeah.
--that drainage is dealt with properly?
That's, that's done here, okay? And what happens is, and this is the reason we got to continue it tonight, okay? Department of Public Works is the department that checks the drainage. They have the engineers and the consultants to do that, we don't, okay? So, they will be making sure that the drainage and the stormwater management is done properly because nowadays, we have new stormwater management laws and bylaws that are much more complicated than they used to be. That's not called order, orders of condition is a technical term that applies to the orders that Conservation Commission issues to protect the wetlands, okay? What we do is applicant submits to us the formal subdivision plan, or in this case, a modification to the subdivision plan. We then, with the help of DPW, police, and fire, determine whether or not that is an acceptable plan. And if it is, then we accept it as a subdivision plan.
And your plan, so your approval would be subject to Concom approval?
No, subject to DPW approval, okay? Typically, Concom does their approvals first because it's kind of silly for the developer to come to us first for the plan, and then find out that there's a swamp where--
Every town is a little different--
Yeah, I understand that. And I know your experience in this business, so.
Well, and I'm glad you're on top of it.
Yeah.
And overall, I'd say that, you know, we're in favor of, we think two dead-end streets makes sense.
Yeah.
Hundred feet of impervious surface eliminated makes sense from a conservation point of view, it makes sense. But it's, as a developer myself, I know the conditions under which I am subject--
Right.
--and how my fear held to the fire.
Right.
And so, my expectation is only that this developer and the prior developer, to the extent, you know, that he has any responsibilities left behind. I haven't lived here long, but I'm concerned about the wetlands not far from me that I understand was filled in by the prior developer, and maybe it wasn't done quite the way it should have been done. I don't understand it fully, I'd like to, and I just want to make sure everything's been done. It sounds like you guys are on top of it, thank you.
And as a developer, you also know that they're putting up a bond or a surety, okay, so that if they can't complete it, the town has enough money to complete the streets and infrastructure, okay? So, yeah, that's there, and we are on top of that.
We don't want to get that far.
No, we, nobody wants to get that far.
Thank you.
But just so you're aware--
Thank you. We've got something to say.
Anybody else, please?
I have a couple of questions. Melissa Walsh, forty-two, Capri Drive. So, this is my house, and there's a retention basin that was originally planned for behind my house, and all the trees have been cleared, and I'm wondering if that is changing at all with the change to how the new layout of the lots is going to be?
Can you tie on?
No, same as it was originally.
Right, there'll be no-- You're talking--
There's, I believe there's supposed to be a big retention basin back there.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it's still going to remain. And my understanding is you have the formal approval of the person on Capri Drive that has the cul-de-sac on their lot?
Yes, correct. Yes, we have an agreement--
Right.
--with them.
Okay.
We do have a copy of it.
We have a copy of it, yeah. Just want to make it clear--
No, we do.
Okay, that's, that the owner of the lot on which, which, the Capri Drive cul-de-sac affects has agreed to let that cul-de-sac be there because, again, it was cutting into part of the land that was on the lot. On the other side, on the Bella Vista side, that lot has not yet been sold, and so there's no, my understanding is, so that there's, there's no problem with developer altering the lot lines.
Correct.
And that's, in fact, why we're here, because, among other things, lot lines are being altered to put the cul-de-sac in. Other questions, comments? Seeing none, I take it back to the board.
John Bonavita, twenty-six, Autumn Ridge, East Long Meadow. Has Conservation Commission approved this, or have they voted to recommend this so far?
I believe that they have ordered, issued orders of condition, yes, so that that's a permit, if you will.
It is. And do we know if they've addressed what was done to the wetlands previously?
I believe they have. I know that there was a couple of enforcement orders put out, and that they were working with the developer to get it resolved, is that correct?
We have two members of the Conservation Commission in the audience.
If the chair of the Conservation Commission would care to comment.
Good evening, Craig Churnstrom, Conservation. Yes, they have been addressed. Mr. Carnavali's taken some corrective measures, and we did have a few other previous issues. And there still is an issue that's ongoing with the wetlands crossing, but that is an issue that we're still working on. But one thing to keep in mind is, we only have jurisdiction over about half the lots in Phase Two, and you're on Autumn Ridge, which is towards the left-hand side over there, correct? Basically, we're non-jurisdictional over there. The wetlands don't encroach into that area at all. But as far as the rest of Capri Drive is pretty much all set, as far as the conservation is concerned, with a little bit of work still to be done at the end of Capri Drive.
Thank you. Any further comment?
My concern is where the, where the bridge was going to go. These, these issues that are coming with runoff down gradient here, I just think from an unprofessional eye may be caused by what was done in the wetlands previously, and nothing's been restored there, and they're getting more runoff of down gradient here. And I think that, I think that that should be addressed before we, before we look any further here.
That's something that would be up to Conservation to address. If there were alterations to the wetlands, then it's up to Conservation to take a look at that.
Yes, and we are. There was some old issues prior to the new developer having it, and they were just sitting there, and then nothing was happening with it. Now that Mr. Carl Riley's taken over, there has been some proactive measures taken there, you know, and we are working to make that better. We actually lifted the enforcement order--
Okay.
--a little while ago.
Thank you. Other comments from the floor? I'm going to take it back to the board. Any additional questions at this time? Do I have a, since we need to continue this, do I have a motion? Let's, before we go to the continuation, we have a request here for a continuation, a, I'm sorry, a extension of the time limit on the subdivision until two thousand twenty-one. So, further explain that to us, like-- When we issued the original approval, okay, it was for two years, and that's expiring, okay? And so, they're asking for an extension, and for another two years, so they can get it done. How much more needs to be done?
We have, we just bought these seventeen lots in February, so--
So, there's no construction on the lots, there's--
No, there's road construction, we're going the road. Road's being built, we've got, we basically have about six lots under agreement, so we're--
You said they give them--
Very happy with the interest that's been shown in the lots, so we think that, as I said before, when we were here back in February, I believe, you know, March, you know, we move projects along. So, based on this timeline, we feel that we'll comply with the timeline, we'll have the roadway done. As you know, the road needs to sit for at least a year or so before the town can then formally accept it, so we feel that with this timeline, you know, we can--
But a motion to extend the approval for two years. Do I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Continue this to June eighteen.
Can I ask, can the waivers get discussed tonight?
I think we should do that at the same time that we discuss this. I mean, you already have, have the waivers for the previous subdivision, right?
Correct.
So, we could-- I find it all in time. Okay. I mean, we've, how often have we gone from thirty to twenty-four on almost every other subdivision? So-- So, the two waivers, one is for going from thirty to twenty-four, do I have a motion to grant that waiver? Do I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
The second waiver was-- For the length of-- The length of the square cul-de-sac. That's a new one because there's a motion to waive the requirement, the length of the cul-de-sac. Do I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Now, do I have a motion to continue?
Are you going to leave this public hearing open?
We're continuing it.
So, it will stay open till the next meeting?
Yes. Do I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you generally.
Thank you.
Okay, next one. We are supposed to read that, read in, because it's just continuing--
Site two thousand nineteen dash oh-eight, Elmcrest Country Club, four hundred and five, Somerville Road, request by applicant for site plan approval for the addition of six hundred and fifty square feet plus or minus to a twenty-two thousand six-six plus or minus structure on a hundred and nine point six-five acre site located in the Golf Recreational Zoning District. Applicant's agent is Richard C. Morris, Architectural EL, two sixty-four North Main Street, Suite Two, East Long Meadow, Mass.
Good evening.
Good evening. Can you turn that so we can see a little bit? Not too far, because--
Yeah, I know.
Everybody, the camera needs to see, everybody else needs to see.
It'll bounce. I'm Rick Morris, Architecture EL. With me tonight is David Flurry, owner of Elmcrest Country Club. We've also asked our landscape architect, Jeff Squire, to attend. He's coming for another hearing, and so he may be here during the course of presentation, and if so, I'll ask him to join, and he's also available to answer questions. As you may recall, we were here, I think about nine weeks ago, we asked for a waiver, and even though the project was modest in size, the board felt that it was better to go through the formal process, so that's what we're doing now. We have since had a pre-meeting with the planning board, we've notified a butters, and the material I have here tonight is identical to what we presented in the past two meetings. But just to recap for everybody's benefit, existing club is here, an aerial photo, we're putting two small additions to the front of the property. Purpose of those additions is what we're referring to as-- Purpose of those additions is what we're referring to as compensatory space. This is space that needs to be added to the building to maintain existing function. Doesn't change the area of operations at all with the exception of accessible bathrooms and a new elevator. The benefit is that in the process of doing so, we can give the building a facelift. So it'll have an improved facade. And we do have elevations. So these elevations drawings show existing conditions and the proposed new additions with the side work. This would be the front. And here is a view from the side. In regard to the site, we're improving the drop-off area up front. And we've done a layout, a revised, re-stratting layout to accommodate accessible parking spaces.
No. Neither.
So that's a...
Any questions from the board?
Quick ones.
At this point, I'll open it up to the public. Does anyone have any questions or comments on this? Sir, again, by yourself.
My name's John Barrett. I live at 360 Pinehurst Drive, the 8th Green. My question is, I couldn't see the diagram when you were describing the two improvements on the front of the building. Yes. Would you mind doing it again, only because I couldn't see what you were describing?
Yeah, in fact, what I'll do is change over to the larger scale floor plan. Shaded here in yellow. You see the new spaces? This would be the lower level, so there's no basement, in the exception of small canora.
They made an elevator floor.
And this, excuse me, this is the first floor. So here shaded in yellow, we have the two additions. You can see they're not terribly large in size. The one to my left here is for the accessible bathrooms and bridal suite. And to the right, we have some office and kitchen amenity space that was displaced from the new elevator and stair. So that's the sum total of the addition.
Other questions or comments?
Yeah, Bob MacRini, 348 Pinehurst. Is this like Phase One of Phase Two? What's Phase Two? The clubhouse or you're going to keep the clubhouse existing? You know, the rumor is it's going to get knocked down. It has to be totally repaired or replaced.
Please address the Chair and then I'll ask them to read...
I'm sorry?
Please address the Chair and then I'll ask them to...
Okay, I'm just curious as to, is this a Phase One of a multi-phase renovation of the facility?
The planning board is not aware of any future plans. I will ask the applicant whether or not he wishes to comment on it.
Sure. No, there's actually only one phase. So once we start to work on the clubhouse, it'll be a complete renovation of the clubhouse based on the current plan.
Okay. Any idea when that will occur?
Well, we were here nine weeks ago, asking for the same thing we're asking for today. So once we get this approval, we'll move forward. We've already contacted demolition contractors to do the interior work. And then once we get that done, we'll start construction, hopefully in the next month to two.
And then, and I don't... Where is the driveway here? Or on this side here?
The driveway's here.
It's here, okay, all right. So it's going in front?
Yeah, so if we come back to the aerial...
Okay, all right.
There's the driveway.
Okay.
So if you can see the back of the building now, it'll look pretty much the same way it does.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Other questions or comments? There are none to take it back to the board, questions or comments? Basically moralizing what we asked them to do. There are none to have a motion to close the public hearing. And the second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Do we have a motion to approve the site plan as presented? Do I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Good to go.
Thank you.
Thank you for...
Appreciate it.
Right, thank you.
SP 2019-05 Attachment of Small Cell Antenna for Parker Street. Requested by applicant for a special permit for attachment of a small cell...
Did you take it out in the hall?
For a small cell... Where is it? Okay, small cell antenna and supporting equipment to an existing utility pole 103-12 right away in a public right away on Parker Street, adjacent to 741 Parker Street, East Long Meadow. SC9 MAO, applicant Silio Partnership, DBA Verizon Wireless, in care of Structure Consulting Group, 118 Flanders Road, Westboro, Mass.
Good evening. My name is Ben Skilin. I'm with Structure Consulting Group, representing Selco Partnership, doing business as Verizon Wireless. With me is Jay Latour, seeing your radio frequency engineer for Verizon, and Tom Johnson, a professional engineer for Proterra Design Group. So this, as you mentioned, this is a proposed planned small cell canister antenna to be mounted on top of a utility pole located at 741 Parker Street. We're here for both a special permit and a site plan review. I believe the site plan review is on the agenda for after the special permit. I'm not sure if you want to reverse those.
Well, we just read the special permit, so let's talk about that.
Just before we proceed. So we, this board took a vote in October, on October 17, 2017. I don't know if you're familiar with that.
Right.
So I don't know, what is the legal necessity to go through this hearings if this is within the two-year period that we granted approvals?
So I do want to mention, that was a waiver of this process. That was for non-residential zones only, and this is located within a Res A zone. So we can't go forward on that one.
Right, thanks.
Yep.
Didn't we also put a limit at how many at that time?
It was 19 additional poles.
Was it 19?
Yep. One other small thing. The plans that were submitted with the application list the pole height at, let's see, 34. The pole is actually at 38.5 feet. National Grid requested additional height on the replacement pole. That puts the center line from 36.6 to 41.1 and the tip height from 38.2 to 42.7. That's the only change to the plans. I have a copy of those updated versions if you'd like them.
At least one for the record.
Thank you.
Okay, so this is going to be similar to the ones you've done elsewhere in town?
Right, so this is a very similar installation. We are mounting the canister just to the top of the existing utility pole. The pole has already been replaced by National Grid. It's going to be, the installation will be small in scope. It's just the antenna and a remote radio head and AC/DC converter and some accompanying cables.
Any questions from the board? I'll open it up to the public. Does anyone wish to comment on this? Hearing none, I take it back to the board. Any further questions, the applicant? Again, we had asked for this in residential areas so we could make sure that it wasn't objectionable to the butters.
So I guess I asked the same question two years ago. So how many more of these do you have planned over the next couple of years?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Jay Latour with Verizon Wireless. To answer your question, Mr. Denver, Verizon, like any other business, evaluates its, you know, needs based on the growth and demand for its network services each year. We've employed about, I believe, five so far in your town since we first met on the first site, which was built near where the Big Y and Stop &amp; Shop are a couple of years ago. So that gives you a kind of approximate of idea of what we're trending, about one or two a year. I can let you know, we actually just activated the small cell facility that is built on top of the Rockies in the Center Square area. So it would be inappropriate for me to come up with a, you know, a direct figure, but we seem to be averaging about one or two a year. The network continues to grow each year and I would anticipate us to maintain that rough trend.
Thank you. One quick comment. You have Allen Street listed as Riverside Drive. Under that. But other than that, I just want to remember about that.
Oh, you didn't get the name change?
No.
Oh, could you refer us to that page?
On the cover, on the...
LA1, right at the front.
Aerial photograph.
I see that.
It was Kingston Drive. Wouldn't it be noticed?
I thought we were down by the river.
I think it is, if I may. I think I looked at it too and I was a bit surprised. I was wondering what town I was working in.
It's Google Earth, actually, which I know is accurate. I'm not sure what happened. But anyway. Hearing no questions from the floor and none from the board, do I have a motion to close the public hearing? Do I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Do I have a motion to approve the special permit? Do I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Let's read the site plan.
Site 2019-07 Attachment of Small Cell Antenna for Parker Street. Requested by applicant for a site plan approval for the attachment of a small cell antenna and supporting equipment to an existing utility pole 103-12 right away in a public right away on Parker Street, adjacent to 741 Parker Street, East Long Meadow. SC9 MAO, applicant Silio Partnership, DBA Verizon Wireless, in care of Structure Consulting Group, 118 Flanders Road, Westboro, Mass.
Okay. Do you have any comments from the floor on the site plan? Hearing none, take it back to the board. Any questions? Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Mr. Chairman, if we could just ask one question. So just as a, as part of the approval, do we need to note that it is for the revised pole height? Not the pole height that's included within the application itself, but the one...
Okay. We take that.
Okay.
Thank you for getting that into the record. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Do I have a motion to approve the site plan?
With the amended height.
With the amended height.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
All right.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, you're good to go. Thank you for coming in.
Yeah, thank you very much.
This is going to be in front of the...
Thank you.
SP 2019-06 Amendment to Special Site Plan Permit for Harkness Ave. Requested by applicant for amendment to special permit 2011-04 to change the holder of a special permit from MLY Incorporated to YTC Inc. at 31 Harkness Ave. Assessor's parcel ID 12-33-0. Located in Business Zoning District. Applicant YTC Inc., 31 Harkness Ave, East Long Meadow, Mass.
Mr. Chairman, I'm wondering if you'd like to also make a motion to hear the next agenda item in conjunction with this as well as it's piggybacked on top of each other.
I don't have another agenda.
Number six.
Number six? Where is that? Oh, okay, got it. Yeah. Why don't you read that in at the same time?
Okay. SP 2019-07 Amendment to Special Permit for Harkness Ave. Requested by applicant for amendment to special permit 2019-06 to change the holder of a special permit from YTC Inc. to... Oh, boy. What is it?
Ho Giabo.
Ho Giabo. Ho Giabo, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Corporation, 31 Harkness Ave. Assessor's parcel ID 12-33-0. Located in Business Zoning District. Applicant is Ho Giabo Corporation, 31 Harkness Ave, East Long Meadow, Mass.
Okay, can you explain the double switch?
Yeah.
Good evening.
I'll let Chrissy do that.
I will. I'm Chrissy Pacula. I represent YTC Inc. So MLY Corporation currently holds a special permit for 31 Harkness Ave. Doing business as Tau's Asian Cuisine. They were before you about approximately a year ago. Tau's Asian Cuisine was supposed to transfer over to MLY Corporation. However, in August of last year, that sale fell through. So now we are here with a new buyer. So we're asking that that special permit be amended back to YTC Inc. And then the second step would be from YTC Inc. over to Ho Giabo Corporation. There's been no change in the business structure. There's been no change in the site plan. So we'd ask that you approve both of these matters today.
Thank you for the clarification. Other questions from the board? Any questions or comments from the public? Hearing none, bring it back to the board. It's pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
I have a motion to close the public, both public hearings.
So moved.
Do I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Do we have a motion to approve both requests?
So moved.
Do I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you all for your time.
Thanks, everybody. Easy a special permit.
Well, we can make it harder, right?
Have a good night, everyone.
Good night. Good luck. Good work, Steve.
Do you want to read this, George? Yeah. Okay. This is continuation of case ZN...
Case ZN 2019-01 Mixed Use District. Petition by applicant M&amp;A Long Meadow LLC to amend the zoning bylaw by adding the new zoning district for mixed use to a change of the zoning district map for the town of East Long Meadow. Applicant agent Attorney James Mantelowski Fitzgerald... Jane Mantelowski, excuse me. Fitzgerald Attorneys at Law, PC 46 Center Square, East Long Meadow, Mass.
Okay. So we came up with a draft bylaw at the last meeting and our administrator, our department chair, department head, has taken our changes and put them into the draft. I know you got them late today. But I believe that they are all correct and all there. We agree, we know that the... We're going to be re-cutifying the zoning bylaw in with the rest of the bylaws. And so we decided that the numbering was not critical. Okay, if the numbering was inconsistent, that'll be taken care of when we do the re-cutification. Okay? So I'd ask the applicant, have you seen the version? Do you have any additional comments on it?
No.
Good. Does any one from the board have any additional?
No.
So can I have a motion to, first of all, then, do I have anyone from the public which should speak to this?
No.
Okay. Do I have a motion then to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Do I have a motion to recommend the draft bylaw to the town council?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion?
I just have a few comments, George. I just saw a little inconsistency with the, some pervage, that's all. Mixed use, you know, should just be consistent throughout the whole document.
And where is it inconsistent?
It's used, it's spelled mixed use here with a hyphen. In some spaces, it's not. So it's just grammatical, really.
Yeah, that's clerical.
Yeah. And then I was going through the chart, the schedule of use and regulations. Let's see here. And there was a couple of them that had question marks under mixed use.
Okay.
So like on 3.041, ground-mounted, you know, arrays and stuff like that. It had "and" with a question. So there was still, it seemed like there was still questions on those. And then another one, public library, obviously we wouldn't have a public library up there. But that's all, that's my comments, is that there was just a couple of them like that.
I think we've resolved the questions.
Do you want to just go through the chart?
Okay.
Just to make sure? Because I had questions when I was looking at that.
Okay. Let's briefly go through that.
You have this under the table, 3.1 East Long Meadow, Schedule of Use Regulations, at by 3.020 Agriculture, Horticulture, Floriculture, Viticulture, blah blah. On parcels of land more than five acres, including commercial livestock, dairy, poultry farm, farm business, commercial greenhouse, farm stand. I don't know if you really want to have that as a byright use in this mixed use discussion. You might want to consider a special permit.
That's a good question. I don't see why, it would not be a use if they wanted to grow stuff there in the interim. I don't see why, it would not be a use if they wanted to, uh, grow stuff there in the interim. I don't see any objection to that. But what was that again, Connie?
Uh, to allow agricultural uses on area, areas greater than five acres. Do you, you, generally, people have issues of concern when you bring in animal husbandry into an area. Not so much if you're going to put a winery in, but if you're going to create odors of concern, then you might want to consider this a special permit if your folks are coming in and requesting this type of use.
I don't know whether you can do that as special permit under state agricultural law. Okay. Farms have their own pole section.
Yes, but you also have a.
Well, they don't require a special permit anyplace else for that. So I would say that, I would. I don't know why they would need, they're going to need a special permit for the, the whole place anyway.
And so we could restrict it, make sure we restrict it there.
At that point.
Yeah.
So will we change?
Leave that as yes.
Yes.
Same thing for the riding academy, um, and forestry. There, there are other things about that.
Okay, so yes for the riding academy, and yes for the forestry, wood harvesting, tree farm, and nursery. And then we move down to 3.026, area and facility for sporting activity. You had no, and I thought you might want to give some additional thought to that, because what if they wanted to create a baseball diamond for community use, or a soccer field, or a lacrosse field, or something, some sort of open space where people might engage in recreational activity using sporting equipment?
I, I think yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, okay. Okay, likewise, 3.0265, recreational facility, commercial and private, you could have a clubhouse.
Yeah.
So yes, okay.
Yep.
And then, under 3.030, single-family detached dwelling.
That's a yes.
Said no on the, on this, this.
It'd be a yes.
So we're going to, going to go with a yes, thank you very much. Moving on to 3.046, public library.
3.041 first.
Pardon?
3.041, ground-mounted football tags.
Yes.
Uh, I, I would think that that would continue to be a no. Okay.
What if somebody wanted to introduce a green form of energy?
They could put it on the roof.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm not for ground.
Okay, thank you, all right. And moving on. 3.046, public library or museum, what if they wanted to create a satellite library or a small museum in the area honoring the?
I, I would leave that at no.
No, okay, okay. On to 3.051, membership club lodge, social recreational community center organization, that had a no. Do you want a special permit in the event that the garden club wanted to open a site where they could host garden club gatherings? I'm just putting that out there as a.
Well, um, here's a question for the applicant. Would you consider residents of the facility to be members of a club, for instance? That, that would have exclusive access to certain amenities?
No.
No.
I would.
You'd, you'd, they'd deal with it differently?
Yeah, it's a clubhouse.
Yeah, so I, I would leave that as, as, as no.
Okay. And then I included, because we had a reserved space at 3.053, live workspace, a special permit?
Yeah, and, and again, the whole thing is under special permit, so I would agree with that.
All right.
Public transportation facilities?
3.0, pardon me, 3.10, I added public transportation facilities for bus stops and to the regional bus, rapid transit bus, or shuttle bus. And I had yes, because you did ask for a bus stop, but we didn't have any provision for reading, and it wouldn't be, wouldn't it be nice to have a coffee shop?
Great.
So I, or a cart, while you wait for your bus.
Okay.
Okay.
You got the dimensional tables. Yeah, the dimensional table. Then the lot area is 20 acres, the frontage is not applicable, setback, accessory setback is not applicable. Maximum height, 50 feet, and.
There was a section that had been in this chart, excuse me, in this table that said, under maximum height. I guess there had been quite a bit of deliberation passed about the height. So 50 feet, and then it had additional verbiage that read, within 400 feet of the public street, and 60 feet beyond 400 feet from a public street. What were you guys thinking? What were you, that, um, that is really hard.
That was, that was in the original bylaw.
Yeah, that's what I'm, so, so I deleted that.
Okay, and then we got the 25-foot landscape buffer, which is.
Yeah, because there was additional verbiage that read, when abutting any residential district, the mirror and side yard shall be 50 feet. That conflicted with what you had discussed in the public hearing.
So again, do I have a motion to recommend this to the town council?
Do you need to reopen for the public?
No.
Okay.
This is amended.
As amended.
Yep. So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Thank you, Lou, for picking up on that.
Maybe you just want to amend your original motion to include this, and that way.
Yeah, including, including the, the table of uses and the dimensional tables.
As amended.
As amended, yeah.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We're there.
Very much.
Off to the next step.
Do I have to do the second part? Yeah, no, that's on that one. And the next one, we're continuing, opening a continuation of ZN 2019-02.
Uh, ZN 2019-02, 330 Chestnut, petition by applicant M&amp;A, M&amp;A Long Meadow LLC, consider a zoning change to 330 Chestnut Street, Assessor's Parcel, 18-38-0, a 40.35 plus or minus acre site from the industrial garden park zoning district to a mixed-use zoning district. Applicant's agent is attorney Jane Mantenowski Fitzgerald Attorneys at Law, 46 Center Square, East Long Meadow, Mass.
Okay, any additional comments from the public? Hearing none, take it back to the board.
So procedurally. Maybe it's staring me right in the face. So, we've created a mixed-use district to submit to the town council.
To town council.
For their approval.
Right.
So there is not a mixed-use district yet.
Yet, correct. And what we're going to do is recommend to the town, to the council, that should they approve the mixed-use district, then we recommend that they make this change to the zoning map, okay? That way, they can hold both hearings at the same time, they can advertise them both at the same time.
Okay.
And, and not delay things additionally.
I'm fine with that.
Okay, let me make sure I understand, you stood your question. Your question is related to if the town council says no, we don't, we end up with a parcel that's zone mixed use with no zone?
No, with that, that can't happen. If they say no, then they, they won't vote to change the zone.
Okay, we're all good then. Want to make sure that was the case?
Yep.
Okay.
Just double checking.
That's all checking.
We're going to roll two dice.
Thank you for bringing that up.
Wanted to make sure. It'd be awful to have a zone with no zone.
Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, do I have a motion to recommend that should the mixed-use district zone be created, we recommend that 330 Chestnut Street, as described here, be changed from industrial garden park to mixed-use zoning?
You want to do roll call vote, please?
Yeah. I need a motion first.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call vote.
Yes.
Lou?
Yes.
Russ?
Yes.
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 Okay. Very good. Onto the next battle.
Thank you. Thank you very much for all of your hard work and your thoughtfulness.
Just by a comment, you really appreciate it. Thank you for your patience and hard work, and I thank my clients for their patience and hard work.
I thank you very much for your patience.
They were patient with us.
In cooperation in this.
We appreciate it.
Trying to get to something that'll get the council to approve, as you know.
Very well, we look forward to it.
Nice work.
Thank you so much. Have a good night.
Okay, we have endorsement of subdivision plans.
I'll prank your glasses.
Are they got anything else here?
I need them very bad. Can I read it?
Before we talk about the endorsement, we have a request for extension of signage approval. That actually should go to the building commissioner. Now, I'm not being active on bylaws. And I was asked to tell you that he's also going to ask the building commissioner for permission to put up a thermometer next to it, with the funding thermometer, you know, which shows how they're getting to their goal. Okay, and I said, try and talk to the building commissioner. He's the one who approves that.
Just so. I have a question, just, maybe it's more related to Connie. So, Allied Flooring and Carpeting, which is located next to Bentley's. They store their, looks like a mini trailer, out on, right at the sidewalk of their property. To me, that kind of creates a mobile, mobile billboard. And do we have restrictions on where a, a site that is zoned, I guess, whatever their zone, can park their trailers right at the street?
Does it have paddles?
It does.
Yes, why don't you bring the matter to the attention of the code enforcement officer, building commissioner?
I'm kind of trying to do it through you.
I know, that's, so I'm.
Okay. Maybe you'll just, I don't know what the bylaw says, or not, on whether it can be done that way, but it's, it's unsightly.
It's commercial vehicles in a, in a business zone, which is, this is not residential.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep, we will do that.
And, and, before, again, before we do the endorsement, one thing I want to bring to your attention, if any of you drive down Deer Park Drive, there's a junkyard been established there, and the building commissioner is aware of it, and is working with the person who put the stuff there to get it removed. There's, there's got to be 30 or 40 vehicles there.
Are you serious?
Yeah.
How long ago did this start to pop up?
Uh, well, I, I've been down there for a couple of months, so I don't know how long. But I know Armand was, had approval to put a parking lot down there for his trucks. And I go down there, and it's Kelly Transportation, and everything but, and plus old trailers. And it just, it's, it's a real eyesore. So, the building commissioner is on that, and is working to get it cleared up, if anyone asks you about it. Okay, and we have two, two endorsements to do. In the case of, is it Turway Lane that we need the additional bond?
Uh, it's, uh, it's Jeffrey.
Jeffrey Lane, okay. Uh, they don't have, we don't have the full bond yet, so we'll endorse them tonight, but we will not release the milars until we get the full bond.
So there's a sign, um, on 83, that talks about lots for sale in Jeffrey Lane.
It's a real estate sign.
Okay.
Okay.
I saw that the other day.
Do you have any comments for us on that?
Yes. As far as the bond, this is a photocopy of a performance bond that was, the actual original performance bond was turned into the planning office on May 13, which is a bona fide valid bond for the amount stated in the requirement for the subdivision.
Can I ask our, our director to comment?
Aye, will be delighted. There's a boilerplate document that we use, and it is provided to the applicant. However, it was not completed according to the boilerplate applicant, uh, boilerplate application. So the additional verbiage includes a 20% contingency fee that is paid to the town until for two years during the curing period, in the event that the road does not hold up to the standards of construction. That was omitted. I sent the original document to our attorney, who reviewed it. We discussed the omitted language, and attorney recommended that would be inserted. And I drafted a document for the applicants to facilitate the creation of this document for you to sign this evening. And apparently, here they are this evening, bringing this matter to your attention regarding the tardiness. When items come in for review, they must go to the town's attorney in regard to subdivision. And it's in the regulations, it's been there since 2001. I've pointed information out to people who have questioned it in the past to help them and assist them in understanding our subdivision regulations. But frankly, this is nothing new under the sun. I didn't write the book, but I do read the book. And, again, I try to help, and unfortunately, there seems to be a disconnect here at the table. So, attorney Maynard recommends that the 20% contingency be in there, and the, um, the agreement, if you should desire to do so, would be to endorse the plan this evening, and then when the documents are returned to us, then we will release the milar for recording. We're also missing, and, and by the way, this information is all in the certificate of approval that is issued upon the approval of the subdivision, so the applicant has this information at hand. And if they have any questions, of course, they can always ask, or they can simply review to the, back to the subdivision regulations that are available 24/7 online.
Okay, thank you.
All right, just, if I may, comment to that?
Can, can, can you please introduce yourself?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Jeffrey Bosworth, 45 Nova Drive.
Thank you.
Sorry about that.
I'm John Nazario.
Thank you, thank you.
Yes, I, I see there is a boilerplate. I would like to. If the chairman would be so kind as to read this email received by me at 7:06 this morning.
It says, "Good morning, Jeff," attaches the form for performance bond the town uses. Perhaps if you email this to your contact, it will, will be of assistance.
Right. That was this supposedly boilerplate. How do I know this exists? Why isn't it, why wasn't that part of, when I got the approval, why didn't someone say, or provide a copy of this at that time?
I have no idea.
If I'd have known that, I wouldn't have gone through all the trouble to do this. Now, my situation is, this took me an extremely long time to even get a bond, because for most bonding companies, this amount is so significant, they don't even want to deal with it. All right, this cost me over $4,000. I can, yes, send this to the bonding company and see if they will go along with this. They may charge me a whole lot more money, or maybe even the equivalent, again, to redo the bond. Or they may say, well, here's your money back, we're not even going to do it.
How, how much is the bond for?
The bond is for $101,760, as specified.
So we're talking about an additional approximately $20,000.
The contingency is built into the total of the bond.
I'm afraid that DPW doesn't agree with it.
This is the sheet that was provided to me.
Calm down, please.
No, I, I'm just saying that that's the sheet that was provided by me, to me, by Bruce Feeny when I did the preliminary determination, after the preliminary determination was done.
If I may.
Yeah.
What the bond should simply spell out is that there will be a remainder of a 20% contingency factor. You're not obtaining 20, an additional 20%, you just want to spell out that once you're, once you have completed the infrastructure and the street and the installation of the infrastructure in the streets, 20% will be retained. 100% is not going to.
not going to go back to you. It's not additional money, it's not an additional sum, it simply, again, spells out that 20% won't be given back or returned.
For two years.
For two years.
So, so he has the right amount in the bond?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we just need a piece of paper that acknowledges that there's gonna be 20% held?
Yes.
Okay, fine. So we'll, we've endorsed the plans, subject to getting that piece, it's not an additional bond.
That language.
Getting that language.
Yes.
So he shouldn't have to go back to the bonding company for that, just sign a, add that, sign that letter, and you call it a day.
If you will allow me just to sign this statement, without this, having to send it back to the specialty company, I will be likely do that.
Yeah.
As long as the town is protected.
You are, you have this.
Yeah. Okay.
Just to make sure you know you're not getting 20% back for two years. That's all.
Okay.
So there's no misunderstanding between us and you.
Or, or in this case, what it means is we will only release 80% of the bond, okay, and hold the other 20% for two years. And, or you could choose, when everything is completed, if you manage to do some sales, to, um, replace the bond with cash, okay? If that's your choice, it's up to you. Okay? Do I have a motion to endorse the Jeffrey Lane Extension Plan?
I'll make a motion to endorse.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
Okay, do I have a motion to endorse the plans for Fairway Lane?
Is he coming in?
No.
He's gonna, you talking about Michael Carravette?
Yeah.
He'll be, he called me at the last minute. He said he'd try to get here for 7:30.
Well, he's not here, but there are no issues with them.
Uh, no, we just have some other documents. Again, we're going to do a similar.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
So as long as you can endorse, and then the covenant that he has to. There was an issue regarding the easements, um, not being identified on the form. So there are easements associated with the stormwater drainage, and all we, we wanted him to do was add C Exhibit A, so that the easements are memorialized and not lost among the file and reported, um, with that document at hand in county registry of deeds. Sometimes an applicant will agree to add a deed restriction, and then, for whatever reason, those deed restrictions are omitted when they go to the closing table by the attorneys, perhaps because they don't understand or see or know all of the details that went into it. So in order to, again, protect the town, the town doesn't take into, um, control the stormwater basins any longer. It's up to the applicant, excuse me, it's up to the homeowner, or the applicant developer, to create a homeowner's association, or for the homeowner to take responsibility for the drainage facility.
Okay.
I'm also providing you with the easement certificate.
Okay.
Do we, do we have a motion on the table?
Okay. He's here, if you want to hold on for that. He's coming to the...
We're all set.
Sorry, guys. I tried to move.
We are. We're all set, yeah, we're all set.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
So, do, did we get a motion yet?
Yeah, I made a motion.
One can I pick? To endorse. You'll second?
I'll second it.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
George, you just wanted to get the vote in before Mike walks through the door.
Yeah.
Yeah. You're late, white. Too late, we already voted.
Stall as long as you can.
We gotta close the meeting.
Yeah, you have to sign, so you'll sign.
Wait, 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 wait.
Camera's still working.
Yeah, we're still, we're still, meeting is still open. Um, Connie, any other business before the board?
Well, yeah, I just was gonna say, I know, yeah, we missed the minutes from the beginning, so I'm not sure if we want to include those tonight, or the meeting.
Oh, the meeting minutes, yeah.
Right here.
Do you have a motion to...
May 7.
Prove the minutes in May 7.
I'll make it.
Do I have a second? Any discussion or comments that correct? Hearing none, all of us in favor?
Aye.
You're done.
Aye.
Any other business, Connie?
No, we've had a long meeting. Thank you for all of your attention.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.